November 9th, Oshkosh Common Council Meeting. Please call the roll.
Board.
Here.
Mugrow.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Miller.
Bojehowski.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Palmeri.
Here.
Present six.
And Councilmember Four will lead us in the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
We ask for guidance tonight as we begin this meeting. May all those who participate in our discussions and our decisions reflect the values that we cherish in this great city.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we do have a proclamation, and this is for November as Native American Heritage Month 2021. Mr. Dave Greenham, would you join me? Proclamation, November as Native American Heritage Month 2021. Whereas the city of Oshkosh is enriched by the knowledge and history of indigenous people who were here before the city's establishment, we acknowledge the original inhabitants of this area, the Menominee and Ho-Chunk Nations. This land encompasses the city of Oshkosh in the Lake Winnebago region. We honor these ancestral grounds and celebrate the resilience and strength that all indigenous people have shown. And whereas before European settlement, Native Americans lived throughout the land that is known as Wisconsin today, notably the Menominee Nation and the Ho-Chunk Nation, had long inhabited ancestral lands in and around what is now Oshkosh, which was named after the Menomine's chief, Oshkosh. And whereas by the end of the treaty period in 1871, most Native Americans had been forced to live on reservations, in an attempt to assimilate tribes, their youth were placed in boarding schools throughout the United States. Some youth, as young as three years old, were removed from their homes, their language and their traditions in order to civilize them into the dominant society. As a result, this mistreatment left them with the legacy of historical trauma. And whereas the city of Oshkosh recognizes the atrocities that indigenous people endured as a result of European settlement and colonization, and whereas during Native American Heritage Month, we also honor our Native American veterans and service members who have courageously served and continue to serve in our armed forces. For over 200 years, Native Americans have defended our country during every major conflict and continue to serve at a higher rate than any other ethnic group in the nation. Because of their selflessness, every generation of Americans receives the precious gift of liberty, and we owe each of them and their families a debt of gratitude for their sacrifice and dedication. And whereas indigenous peoples living in Oshkosh represent many of the 12 tribes of Wisconsin, whereas each tribe has a unique history and culture, indigenous peoples in the city of Oshkosh represent an important and valued part of our community. Their history is our history. Now therefore, I, Lori Palmeri, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim the month of November be recognized as Native American Heritage Month and encourage residents of the city to learn more about the history of indigenous peoples and to celebrate their culture.
I want to thank you, Mayor Palmeri, for the proclamation, not only from the Menominee Tribe, but all tribes here in the state of Wisconsin. It is Native Heritage Month, and we are here tonight to talk about the history of our people, the Menomines, of which we will be doing in a short, short while here. Thank you again.
Thank you. LeWainen. Next on the agenda are citizen statements to council, and this is our opportunity for citizen statements that are not related to specific agenda items. We have two public comment periods. Do we have anyone registered for citizen comments?
No, we do not.
All right, we will move on then to public comment on agenda items.
Okay, for item number 20, Resolution 21554, we have Thomas Fotek.
Mr. Fotek, step right up. Welcome.
I'm really here just to answer any questions that you may have when that issue arises.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, for item number 21, Resolution 21555, we have quite a few people. We'll start with Sister Mary Jo Solinsky.
Yes, step right up, welcome.
I'm Mary Jo Solinsky, a sister of a new genesis in the Green Bay Diocese. I live here in Oshkosh, 2280 Patriot Lane, Unit D, and I'm a member of Esther. I also want to mention that one of the members of my community is a Native American from the Menominee Nation, so this is kind of personal for me. I'm here to address the City Council Resolution 21555, the Oshkosh Monument, the updated signage, and I'm asking you to support and approve the updated historic signage for the Chief Oshkosh statue in Menominee Park. The Menominee history is the right and responsibility of the Menominee Nation, and it's amazing to me that Oshkosh has a chance to promote some healing of the misrepresentation that has been done to the Menominee people. Approving the updated historic signage for the Chief Oshkosh statue would help to do just that. We see so much dishonesty in our political system today, and it seems to me that much of it is done to save face. It takes integrity to admit that maybe by honest mistakes even, wrong interpretations were promoted in the past. I like to think there are people of integrity here in Oshkosh. Admitting that something in the past was incorrect makes one a bigger person, one to be looked up to, not a smaller one. Please approve the new historic signage and help the healing to happen. Oshkosh would be looked up to as a city brave enough to correct misrepresentations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Keith Wolf, and then we have Elizabeth Lee.
And please state your name and address to do it.
My name is Keith Wolf, K-E-I-T-H-W-O-L-F, and I live at 2314 Wisconsin Street here in Oshkosh. I'm here as a private citizen, but for the record, I'm also a member of the Oshkosh-Ester Work Group and a member of the Algoma Boulevard United Methodist Church.
Welcome.
The majority of the information that I'm about to share comes from the Oshkosh Public Museum website. The Menominee have lived in Wisconsin for over 10,000 years, and their origin stories include no other place except Wisconsin. They claimed much of our state, and today many Wisconsin place names reflect that this was once the Menominee homeland. But the Menominee had little real choice in anything related to their future at the time of Chief Oshkosh, under European colonialism and the newly-formed United States government. The tribe had no power or no clout in relation to the government. They were at the mercy of a powerful and domineering government. To acquire native land, the federal government intimidated, threatened, and deceived them. As we all know, in 1836, the Treaty of the Cedars, Oshkosh and the Menomine sold 4.2 million acres, including all of their lands in the Upper Peninsula of Michigan, for $620,000. Later, in the 1848 Treaty of Lake Poigan, Oshkosh and the Menomine sold their remaining lands in Wisconsin to the United States, and in exchange, the government offered them about 600,000 acres along the Crow Wing River in Minnesota, essentially eliminating the entire Menominee Nation from Wisconsin at that time. But Chief Oshkosh was expected to lead his tribe to Crow Wing River, but he and the other tribal leaders claimed that they had signed that treaty under pressure, and in 1852, they were allowed to stay on what was then a temporary reservation on the Wolf River in northeastern Wisconsin. And finally, in 1854, a treaty made this 250,000 acres of what was left a permanent Again, Chief Oshkosh signed that new treaty with great reluctance. The Menominee people did not abandon their identity through this process, and they remained united, held together in part by the gift of the man we call Chief Oshkosh. Today, the Menominee continue to live on part of their ancestral homeland. The Menomine's continued and enduring presence in Wisconsin is a far greater accomplishment to Chief Oshkosh than just giving his name to the city, which is what the current plaque states. Again, according to the museum, and this is a quote, "Our identity as a people is tied to our history. Our shared story is the glue that binds us together as Americans, create unity, and gives our nation strength. Through peace, turmoil, and war, we draw on the knowledge that our country has seen worse, yet we endure." The Menominee kept their identity and culture and a small part of their ancestral homeland because of Chief Oshkosh's leadership. From all of this, you can see that the losses that the Menominee Nation has suffered over the years have been devastating. I believe the least we can do is let them tell their own story. I fully support all five plaques. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Elizabeth Lee, and then we have David Greenham.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Beth Lee. My address is 3554 Bambi Lane, Oshkosh. I came here tonight to voice my support for the resolution to approve the updated signs for the Chief Oshkosh statue in Menominee Park. It's very encouraging to me to know that individuals from the Menominee Nation have contributed to the plaques since far too often their voices are not included, much less centered, in conversations about our history. I've been to Menominee Park many times with my two-year-old daughter, and I hope as she grows up, these plaques can be talking points for us to discuss the history of Oshkosh. I didn't grow up in Oshkosh and sadly had never taken time to research who Chief Oshkosh was after seeing the statue in Menominee Park. I was disappointed when I heard that there was a push to update the plaques because Chief Oshkosh looked nothing like the statue, and he accomplished many things that he would likely be more proud of than having a city of mostly white people named after him. I was very happy to know that the city was looking to correct the information posted in the park. I urge you to vote in favor of all five plaques.
Thank you. Mr. Greenham? Welcome.
He got a man which kick it in me most of my chase in the door of us mass and oak. And as we see in Naukau, we should tell you the total moral and it's key waking who my nominee okay. My name is David Greenham, Tribal Historic Preservation Officer for the Menominee Tribe. My Menominee name is Naukau. That means when the sun is at mid-sky, and I'm from the Menominee Wolf Clan. My address is W 2255, Joe Summers Road, Kachino, Wisconsin, on the Menominee Indian Reservation. I come here to speak about Chief Oshkosh and to try to give some of the true history of which we did and our work group who wrote the five plaques that are in question tonight. Chief Oshkosh, he was born at Green Bay, in the Old Kings Village, and it was there that he had a start as a, as a young man, as a leader, and soon became chief at the 1827 treaty at Buttermore. It was there that the Menomines went out ahead chief because of, some of them had passed away before him, so they needed a head chief to take them through the treaty era, and it was Michigan Governor Louis Cass who had asked the Menomines to present to them someone that could lead them to the treaty era, and the peace medal was hung on Chief Oshkosh at Buttermore. It was there that Chief Oshkosh then had the responsibility to speak for the Menominee people in negotiating the treaties, and I can only imagine what he had went through in having to give up so much land. And it was, much of it was by force, because if the Menomines didn't negotiate, they would have taken away from us anyway, so he would always try to make the best of it. The Menomines signed seven treaties with the US government, and the treaties of 1831 through 1854, Oshkosh did speak for the Menominee people. But it wasn't to the treaty of 1848 that the Wisconsin was wanting to become a state, and they wanted the rest of, the government wanted the rest of the Menomine's land. And in exchange, it would give 600,000 acres in Minnesota Crow Wing. But Oshkosh was reluctant to sign this treaty. He said, "I have to go over there and see if this land you promised us." And he and a delegation of chiefs went over to Crow Wing, and they looked at the land, and it wasn't land that they had promised. Two warring tribes, there was Gibway and Sioux, he didn't want no part of that, and the resources they promised weren't there. Came back and he told the people, "We will not move. We'll go to Washington," he said, "and speak to President Fillmore," and a delegation of chiefs went to Washington. And it was said that Oshkosh spoke almost two hours to President Fillmore through an interpreter, trying to convince the president that the Menomine should stay in their ancestral territory. It wasn't to, it was from this negotiation that the Menomines were, said to stay at Lake Poigan until he made a decision, president. He finally did, and the Menomines were granted a reservation on the Wolf River, a place that nobody wanted, but our people under Oshkosh, he said, "I know this territory. Our people know it. Let us live there, and that is our reservation today." The wilderness is the trees that they were talking about, and we still have those trees on our reservation that we take care of, of which the philosophy of Chief Oshkosh, he said to them, "There will always be sustain if we do this type of force management of which he brought forth, and it's called sustained yield today." But I just wanted to say that Chief Oshkosh's legacy is not given the name, his name, to the city of Oshkosh. It is the Menominee people that came after him and who are living today on the Menominee Reservation, and some live off. But I wanted to come here tonight and speak about that and ask and recommend that the five plaques of Chief Oshkosh Memorial be approved here tonight. LeWainen.
Thank you.
Okay, Aaron Sheer, and then Guy Ryder.
Welcome.
Good evening, my name is Aaron Sheer. I live at 1720 Cliffview Drive in Oshkosh. I'm here to speak in support of the resolution concerning the signage for the Chief Oshkosh Monument. I wrote a letter to the council, and I'm not going to reiterate all of that to you, but I wanted to share a couple of additional thoughts that I also shared with the Landmarks Commission. As the Director of the Paint Arts Center and Gardens, I am automatically an ex-officio member of the Landmarks Commission, and in this capacity, I receive all of their agendas and minutes. For the nearly 20 years that I have been the Director of the Paint, I have followed the activities and decisions of the Commission because I respect and admire their important work in preserving Oshkosh's history. In considering the signage for the Chief Oshkosh Monument, I was struck by how unique this project was for the Commission. Their work has almost exclusively focused on preserving the structures and stories of European immigrants and their descendants in Oshkosh. The membership of the Commission itself is also, has the perspectives and represents that of European descendants. The proposed Chief Oshkosh signage was perhaps the first time the Commission was asked to represent the history and perspective of the people who are indigenous to the land that is now Oshkosh. Importantly, the language of the signage was shaped by Menominee citizens and shares their history from their perspective. Also, the signage was reviewed by the city's new Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, which represents the perspective of diverse citizens in Oshkosh. I believe we are incredibly fortunate to have the participation of the Menominee citizens and the DEI Committee, and I feel we should listen to what they have told us. Like I asked the Landmarks Commission, I asked the council to hear and respect their perspectives, which are different from that of the majority of us who are European descendants. The other thing I wanted to share with the Commission was a brief personal story. Nearly 20 years ago, when I applied for and was offered my job at the Paint, I had no idea what the character of the community was like. As a gay person, it was especially important to me that the community was receptive to diverse people. In trying to get a sense of the climate of the community, I read the Oshkosh Northwestern online. At that time, Oshkosh was grappling with the Indian mascot of West High School, and even though it was very contentious, ultimately, the school board voted to abandon the mascot. This made a big impression on me. It sent a strong message that Oshkosh was able to grapple with a controversial issue related to diversity and to make a difficult decision respecting the perspective of people who are not the majority of the community. Remarkably, that was 20 years ago. Now, Oshkosh has another opportunity to respect the perspective of the indigenous people of this region. I believe we, as a community, should listen to the wishes of the Menominee people. I believe we should do this simply because it's the right thing for us to do, but I also want to point out that this decision says a lot about the character of our community. Do we truly listen to people who are not the majority? Are we open to and respectful of the experiences and views of diverse people? Can we learn from the past and from one another and try to do better? I believe this is the kind of community that we should continue to strive to be. I encourage you to vote in favor of the new signage for the Chief Oshkosh Monument. Thank you.
Thank you.
Guy Ryder, and then we have Arnold Shovelries.
Is Aniquit here?
Okay.
Aniquit, are you there with us?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, welcome, Posol.
Yeah, Posol, sorry I couldn't be there in person, but I wanted to just add my I wanted to introduce myself in our language. I'll start in our language. My English name is Guy Ryder. My real name is Aniquit, and I'm the Executive Director of a nonprofit called MiniConic and located here on the Menominee Indian Reservation. I'm really just wanting to comment and add to others' comments tonight in support of these plaques. I think it's a noble opportunity and venture that the city of Oshkosh has before them to really listen to the voice of the Menominee people and do what we all know is right and hopefully portray our respected chief in good light. So I just wanted to add, hopefully that you guys will vote for all five plaques and we can move forward and really bring the voice to our statue, the Chief Oshkosh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Arnold Shovelries.
Arnold Chevalier.
Posol, my name is Osal, and I'm a key, I belong to the Eagle Clan. I am mayor, members of the council. On behalf of my two colleagues who have worked very diligently to bring this to this point, I rise and supported these five plaques, and I think that in approving these tonight, that is our wish. I feel that we will have start, start a new era in our relationship, that our, both of our communities can move forward, and that these plaques will bring more and more of that throughout the state of Wisconsin. I want you to know that we've worked diligently with other, your other committees, standing committees, and to try and resolve our differences and our issues in a good, respectful manner. And I truly, truly believe that this is a great moment for us, both communities, to move forward, and I thank you very much for your consideration, and like to say, LeWainen in closing.
LeWainen.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Considine, and then we have Shirley Brabender-Maddox.
Good evening, I'm Jennifer Considine. I live at 300 Dale Avenue, and I'm also here to speak in support of the five plaques. I wanted to come as a citizen of Oshkosh tonight to thank the people of the Menominee Nation for the gifts of these plaques to our city. I run by the statue at least three times a week, and I often have my kids with me. And I remember last summer, my 11-year-old stopped at the statue, and he looked at it and he goes, "Yeah, that's not right." And he looked at the plaque and he started talking about what he'd learned at school about forestry and how Chief Oshkosh had been a leader in that area and a leader of his peoples. And he said, "And I don't think he looked anything like that statue." And I thought, "Well, I didn't know that, and I should have known that," right? And what a great moment for my kid to educate me, and then an opportunity for me to say, "I didn't know that, and I'm really glad to learn that tonight." And I think we have the opportunity, as a city, to offer that education to a lot of people, a lot of us who need to know more about the gifts that we have received from the Menominee Nation. So I'm glad to see these five plaques here tonight, and I encourage you to support them and embrace the opportunity for our city to really speak an apology and in partnership with the Menominee Nation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have been the chairman of the Landmarks Commission during the last six years in which the project came to us to rectify the inscription on the statue at Menominee Park to Chief Oshkosh. And we felt immediately that if the story was to be told, because there was nothing there that said anything about Chief Oshkosh, that we would ask if the tribe would tell their story about their chief and their story. And they graciously invited us. David, thank you. Twice we came up to visit with him at Keshina and we learned so much. The next part, I'm going to kind of channel President Biden with his rather unfortunate encounter with President Macron dealing with the Australian submarines. And he said, "What we did was rather clumsy. It was not done with a lot of grace." And I think over the six years, there were gaps and pauses and who was doing what and then we had COVID for 18 months. We didn't meet several of our members on the Commission, do not have computers, so it was kind of a lull. But anyway, that was where we lacked in grace. I always anticipated that this would be educational, having been a teacher for 35 years. Education, learning, dialogue is very important. And so I was hoping that in the messages, we would find healing and hope. And the healing for the hurt and the weight of pain, hundreds and hundreds of years of pain that the tribe have felt, and they are the only people, tribes, that always were here. Other tribes came in, but this was their land and so they had pain of the loss. And so I was just hoping that besides learning, that we would approach healing. And in the fifth plaque, there are two sentences, the two final sentences, and I'm going to read them because I think they're important. It says, "The fifth plaque, the five plaques now surrounding the monument, celebrate the life and culture of an important chief of the Menominee Nation. They have been placed here in the hope of promoting the forms of education and dialogue that are necessary steps in the process of healing." I think it is important that when visitors come to their spot, it's on the highest little knoll, we don't have many knolls on Lake Winnabago, but it's a higher spot, that as they read these plaques, that they will realize that they were written by and approved by the Menominee Nation. I think that's very important. It wasn't the Landmarks Commission that wrote the story. It was the tribe. It was his people that wrote them. I didn't think I'd have a chance to personally thank David Grignon and the tribal members. I have my thank you written in here, but I'd like to thank you personally for the meetings and the workshops that you attended, for all the times that you spent writing and meeting with consultants and dealing with probably a difficult old woman who wanted to honor you and your chief, but wanted to make sure that it would be healing for you. I'd also like to thank, at the last minute, Rebecca Comfort came to our last workshop and she is the liaison from the Wisconsin Historical Society to the 12 First Nations. And she graciously facilitated our last meeting and it ended with a good result. I'd like to thank the city staff and the city manager who have set meetings and enabled us to have hybrid meetings, which they usually don't allow, to enable this to reach a good conclusion. And so I recommend to the city council that you approve the Chief Oshkosh project because I believe that it will provide hope and healing and provide a chance for dialogue and education between the people that live here now and those whose land was here for thousands of years. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no further individuals registered.
So that concludes our consent, I'm sorry, our public comments on agenda items. We do have consent agenda next. Before we go on to consent agenda, I'd like to introduce a motion to reorder the agenda to allow for 21-555 to be permitted first before we go on with the rest of the agenda.
I'll second that.
Need discussion on the motion? Please take the roll.
Ford.
Aye.
Muggerower.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Wojahowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
All right, so we will redirect to item 21-555. Approve historic signage for Chief Oshkosh Monument in Menominee Park. Landmarks Commission and Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Committee recommend approval. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
We need a motion first.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right. Motion by Wojahowski, second by Lindsey Erickson. All right, thank you. Need discussion. Councilmember Erickson.
Thanks. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who has spoken tonight. I know this has been a long and sometimes difficult process, but I think it's important that we're finally kind of coming to terms of our history as a city and the land that we occupy. This isn't just about history, this is current. The Menominee people are here and it's about time that we recognize all of their contributions to the city. So just wanted to say thank you.
Councilmember Ford.
Same deal. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you for all of the emails. I responded in a way I'll share with all of you as well. I'm voting yes. I look at it this way, we have a statue here that is part of Oshkosh's history, but it's an inaccurate portrayal of Chief Oshkosh and his accomplishments. So we could remove the statue because it's inaccurate or we can keep it and acknowledge the problem in a way that's supported by the Menominee Nation. So I'm really glad we got to this point of a constructive compromise, even though the road was bumpy. Sometimes healing takes that. So again, thank you to everyone who worked on this.
Other council members? I too would just like to express thank you and gratitude to the Menominee tribe for their patience and sharing of their time and knowledge, especially Historic Preservation Officer Dave Grignon and Arnold Chevalier and Co-Chairman Doug Cox, UW Oshkosh Intertribal Student Organization, Dennis Zach, Dr. Pascal Manning, and especially to, as Shirley indicated, Rebecca Comfort for coming in here towards the end to help facilitate. And especially the Landmarks Commission and Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Commission and finally the citizens of Oshkosh for taking this opportunity. So thank you all. Thank you, it doesn't seem enough for all the work that's gone in. All right, are we ready to take the call? Take the roll? Please call a vote.
Ford.
Aye.
Muggerower.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Wojahowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
Right, the resolution is passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We'll just take a brief pause while the chambers dissipate. All right, our next item on the agenda is consent. We'll take a motion and a second.
Second.
Need discussion on consent agenda?
Ford.
Aye.
Muggerower.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Wojahowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
All right, we'll now move on to new ordinances. The first new ordinance that we have, there will be no action this evening. That's ordinance 21-549. Approve zone change from institutional district to single-family residential. SR54, property located at 338 North Eagle Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Again, there will be no action on that. This will come back to council at the next meeting. And our next new ordinance, 21-550, reverse the direction of traffic flow on the one-way pair of Central Street and Kentucky Street from West Nevada Avenue to West New York Avenue. Staff recommends to waive the rules and adopt on first reading. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll move to waive the rules and adopt on first reading.
Second.
All right, need discussion on the motion to waive the rules? Please call the roll.
Ford.
Aye.
Muggerower.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Wojahowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
And now we need a motion on the ordinance 21-550.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the ordinance? All right, please call the roll.
Ford.
Aye.
Muggerower.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Wojahowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
All right, next we have a pending ordinance 21-551. amend Chapter 8 to eliminate auctioneers and direct solicitation license requirements and to revise regulations pertaining to persons directly soliciting within the city of Oshkosh.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Saying none, please call the roll.
Ford.
Aye.
Muggerower.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Wojahowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
All right, we will move to new resolutions. Resolution 21-552. amend the city of Oshkosh fee schedule pertaining to parking permit fees for city-owned lots. Do we have a motion? I mean, a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on 21-552. Councilmember Ford.
Just want to ask a quick question of city staff, just to confirm that I'm reading this correctly, that we have not modified these rates since 1984?
Yeah, that's basically the current fees were put in place by ordinance in 1984 and we can't find anything more recent, so that's what we believe to be true.
Okay, I'm tempted to ask Russ about inflation numbers, but I'm not going to. Just gonna leave it at that. Thank you.
All right, no further discussion. Please call the roll on 21-552.
Ford.
Aye.
Muggerower.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Wojahowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
All right, next is Resolution 21-553. Approve development agreement with North Point Development Corporation for redevelopment of Smith School.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Wojahowski.
Thank you. Do we have someone here from developer? I have a question. And this is later on in the process. I'm not even sure, maybe this is what you deal with, but when this project is completed, is it North Point? Who's in charge of facilitating the building? Like who is in charge of the application process? You know, like when people start wanting to actually move into this place once it's done?
So they have a, the project's getting tax credits from WIDA. So you got to have a qualified property management firm. I believe it's ACC Property Management is who they use. I'm not sure exactly who it is, but it's somebody that has to go through training to make sure that they're qualifying all the people that will intend on living there kind of thing, validating that they are low-income folks.
Okay, and has that group already been approved?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
They manage all their properties around the Fox Valley area.
Okay, and maybe this is a question for them, but I'm just going to pose it in case maybe you do have an answer for this, but I had been getting inquiries from people, you know, in the community, wondering, one, the application to apply to live there, is there a fee and is there a background check that is conducted when applying to live there? Do you know that off the top of your head?
Unfortunately, I don't.
Okay, that's all right. I just posed that question because, you know, this has become something that's been emerging and maybe this is more for council, an issue that's kind of been emerging around the country and in the state where, you know, that is a barrier to access. And if we're promoting affordable living like this building is, that's something that I'd hope we look at in the future, if that is in fact something that they are doing. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Do other council members have questions for Tim? All right, please call the roll.
Ford.
Aye.
Muggerower.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Wojahowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
All right, next we have new resolution 21-554. Approve one-year agreement with Greater Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Kelly Nyforth, would you like to give a summary of this proposed contract?
Absolutely. Typically in the past, the city of Oshkosh has entered into a three-year agreement with the Greater Oshkosh Neighborhood Group, and they are boots-to-the-ground folks that really work with all the different neighborhood associations and city staff and other organizations throughout the city. Right now, they are looking at adjusting their strategic plan and part of that is just based on market conditions with what originally they had set out to do. So when they're looking at their strategic plan, they're also going to be looking for other funding sources and other ways to sustain the organization. So with that, they are just requesting a one-year contract with hopes that this coming year in 2022, they can work on a plan and come back. And I believe they want to have a workshop with council in early 2022 to discuss some of their ideas. And then I think they would be willing to look at another longer-term funding sources and other ways to sustain the organization. So with that, they are just requesting a one-year contract with hopes that this coming year in 2022, they can work on a plan and come back, and I believe they want to have a workshop with council in early 2022 to discuss some of their ideas, and then I think they would be willing to look at another longer-term three-year contract in the future, starting in 2023.
Okay, all right. Kelly, while you're here, if I could ask, of council pleasure, we received the One Oshkosh, Our Neighborhoods Engaged Strategic Plan, the 2017 through 2020, and I know that community development's been working on that for some time as far as an update, kind of delayed maybe with the housing study and, and different things, but could you talk a little bit about that?
That was actually approved by council, the, I believe it was 21 to 2024 plan. Council approved that 7-0 in March of this year. So that was approved earlier this year.
What the update was?
Yep, the One Oshkosh Strategic Plan was approved in March of this year.
Through 2024?
Yeah.
And so, in your opinion, does that match up with what the strategic plan is that's changing for GOHNI, given that we may be reshaping things with this housing study that's coming down the pike?
It does, I believe for a year. I think it's a good fit. It aligns with the goals that they have in the One Oshkosh Plan, and then the goals that they're working in their strategic plan, and then, as I'm working with them, I'm also taking a look at the city strategic plan, too, to ensure that it meets the, the goals of our plan. We're, as I think I had mentioned at the last couple of meetings, we have a draft city housing study, so my guess is in early '22, we'll be looking at that and really prioritizing what projects we want to be working on in 2022 and out, so I think the timing might be right to then work with GOHNI to see what they could help with moving forward in 2023.
Very good. So then, this agreement removes the requirement, as I understand it, for them to acquire real estate and rehab, whereas the former required that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
For this, just this one year?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Other council members, any questions for Mr. Fortick? Welcome, Tom. Good to see you again in, in a new role. I don't know if you'd like to come up and just say a few words?
Thank you for listening to Kelly. She made a very good presentation. I don't want to say too much, because I'll just undercut what she said, but we really value our relationship with the city. The planning staff's been extremely supportive of us, and I think that we're at a point, the maturity of our organization is such that we really need to look at why we are what we are. The real estate market kind of kicked us in the head and really made us think about how do we want to proceed from here, and I think that, for us, this one-year agreement makes a lot of sense, because it gives us time to work with Kelly and her staff to really figure out what's the best way forward for us. And keep in mind that for us, a big part of what we do is the creation of, of the neighborhood organizations. We're up to 20, thanks to the, you guys approving one last month, and I think there's room for some real growth there. We don't have, currently have a neighborhood organization on the south side, so we're really working with some leads we have there, so those are the kinds of things we really want to focus on, but we need to be thinking more strategically long-term, which is why we prefer the one-year agreement for now.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, I just wanted to say, and you alluded to it, but it takes a lot for, for your organization to, to acknowledge that maybe, you know, the intended purpose when you started isn't exactly where you are right now, and that you're in an inflection point, maybe, that it's time to look at that and do a deep dive, and I, so I respect that, that acknowledgement. I think a one-year deal is, is fair to both sides, and it's a good thing to do. I love the relationship that the city and GOHNI has, and, you know, strengthening our neighborhoods is, is very important to our strategic plan, and you guys are doing, doing a, a good job at that. On a, my own personal note, I'm glad to hear that the real estate part, maybe for at least this year, is out of, you know, out of your purview for a little bit. I think it's something that, you're just, the organization itself doesn't excel at, and if you're not gonna be good at it, we should probably stop doing it. So I appreciate the acknowledgement of that part of it as well, that even though it was something that we asked you to do, you know, originally, that going forward, it may not be the best thing.
Right.
So, just, just wanted to acknowledge those things.
Also, speaking selfishly, it's my eighth day on the job.
That too.
So, so, so I'm like, I think, taking, taking, taking a step back is a good opportunity for me to say, okay, let's, let's really look at this.
I did mean to acknowledge that. I was gonna start there, I jumped right in, but.
I've been on the board, but it's not the same thing, let me tell you.
There's nothing like baptism by fire, right?
Thank you very much.
Well, I was inclined to make a motion to look at six months, but I, I think that the new leadership may be a fresh start there, and obviously, your experience on the board, you, you're well suited to that role, so I appreciate that, and I'll be supporting it. Other council members? All right, please call the roll.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugroer.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right, we are at 21-556. Having moved 21-555 up to the beginning, we will move on to 21-556. approve Gulf War Memorial Monument at South Park War Memorial Area. Advisory Park Board recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the Vietnam Veterans of America for donating the cost of this monument. I mean, these were wars that impacted heck of a lot of people in my generation, and it's nice to see it acknowledged.
All right, please call the roll.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugroer.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried seven.
And next we have Resolution 21-558. Adopt, or, I'm sorry, 557. approve 2022 Business Improvement District Operating Plan and Budget, $140,000, 610.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Any discussion on the bid budget? All right, please call the roll.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugroer.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried seven.
And 21-558, adopt 2022 Annual Operating Budget and establish the property tax levy for the city of Oshkosh.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I just want to start with just a little bit of a thank you to city staff, to city manager Roloff and the finance director and his team, just for leading us through this process. It's a long process, even for us, and you guys have been doing it many, many more months than we were a part of it, many more meetings and hours put into it, but the, the work product that you've put into it and that we've gotten out of it is, is a good, good outcome, and I appreciate the efforts, and that goes to the, obviously, the departments and department heads and on down the chain, too, so just wanted to acknowledge the, the hard work. It's not a quick and easy process. No budget's ever perfect. Every one of us up here would probably like to see more in certain areas and less in certain areas, that's a given fact, but in the end, this is us coming together and saying this is what best moves us forward, meets our strategic plan goals, and keeps the city of Oshkosh moving forward. So I'll, of course, be supportive of it. There is one thing, that, you know, it'll get noted in the media, the, the increase, and it's not to go without talking about. You know, we're looking at a, we're gonna be approving a, a 4.62% change from last year. That's a big number, I acknowledge that. One thing I just would like to note that most of that, well over 4%, is tied to our people, and that's absolutely something I support. This is cost of living increases, contractual raises, as well as the big driver, health insurance, as with everybody, everybody experiences that in the private sector, but in the public sector, it's, it's public knowledge, and we get to talk about it a little bit. So just wanted to acknowledge that most of this increase is driven by the, our main, our main resource, it's our people, and fully supportive of, of, of the budget we're gonna put forth here to, to improve things here in the city. So with that, I'll turn it back.
Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, well said, Deputy Mayor. I'll, I'll echo that, those thanks. Budget's the most important thing we do. It's the contract between the government and the governed. A good budget's developed via transparent and inclusive process. It's easy to understand, it reflects the values of the community. I think this budget does that. A few highlights, we keep funding core services, police, fire, EMS, streets, parks, all the things that we take for granted, but the things that make Oshkosh a quality place to live. We do keep the levy at a reasonable rate. We started with a goal of setting it between 4% and 5%, and, and we hit that, and I think more important, we hit that without budgetary tricks that would cause long-term financial problems. We keep our overall debt and debt service in check, and every year, we keep improving the presentation of our budget, and I, I want to give a shout out to Finance Director Van Campel on that. Every year, the document gets more interactive and more actively transparent. That should hopefully help build faith in this process. I want to acknowledge some of the things we didn't fund as well. I think that's the hardest part, it's just part of the reality of having limited resources and infinite needs. Two things in particular that came up at our, some of our enhancement discussion. The fire department's request for an assistant battalion chief, didn't happen this time, but we'll have to remember, the need is still there. Second, late in the process, we had a brief discussion about a diversity equity and inclusion coordinator. My hope, and really, I think my expectation, is that we'll see city staff request a position at some point in the future, a position that has clear authority, clear lines of reporting, adequate funding, and a charge that sets them up to succeed. As we move forward with integrating some of those equity metrics into the budget process, I'm confident the charge will get there, and this reflects my commitment to process, and I admit I'm big on process, that's boring. Councilman Miller's laughing at me, because he gives me a hard time on that, but it's really easy to hear process and be cynical, and view process as an excuse not to act. But process in government is what makes sure that we're being fair, makes sure that we're being equitable. It leads to sustainable, lasting success, and I will gladly trade immediate-term criticism for long, long-lasting change. I mean, any day of the week, I'll take that, that bargain. This budget is the result of a well-defined process, and it sets up Oshkosh for success long-term. It'll be that commitment to the process, it makes the things that are funded tonight work, it'll also make the things that aren't funded tonight reality in the future, so I'm very pleased to be voting in support of this tonight.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I echo the sentiments of, of Mike and Matt. The staff did a great job, but I, I feel like the council itself did an amazing job with this budget, working together. There was no strife, there, everybody communicated well, so I want to thank my council members. This, this is the best we've ever worked together, and I, I'd like to see that continue, so thank you to each and every one of you for, for doing some real hard work on this and making this happen, so thank you all.
I'd also like to join the chorus there on the thank yous. It's a gratitude evening, because this is, as was pointed out, the hardest, I think, and the most challenging effort that, that council does. I mean, most folks may not realize, but we're working from home, and, you know, no designate, designated offices or phones or assistants here at City Hall, but certainly, all the professional work that is done by staff is greatly appreciated in informing and executing this particular piece of our responsibility as well, so I'm very grateful for that, and I just have one little housekeeping request before we vote on the budget, and that is perhaps, you know, some opportunity for some additional improvements, might be some symbols that relate to an equity component when we have items in the budget, and/or an environmentally friendly component related to climate mitigation. I mean, I think a number of us are feeling the pressure of nine years and keeping things at 1.5 in terms of the temperature, and I think that would be helpful to folks who have requested from us what we are doing towards climate change and equity, as just some visual symbols within the budget document, both operational and CIP, so that would just be appreciated if we can talk about that, and in preparation for next year, when we get to do it again, so, thank you, folks. Please call the roll on the budget.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugroer.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried seven.
And our last new resolution is 21-559. approve financing for the 2022 capital improvement projects.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the CIP? Please call the roll.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugroer.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Council discussion direction to city manager, future agenda items. Do council members have any future agenda items they'd like to discuss? Future meetings, future workshops? Looks like we do have the facilities planning workshop for December 14th at 5:00 PM. I do want to bounce back to future meetings. Deputy Mayor, I think we have a close council city manager review.
Yep, November 23rd. We'll be going to a closed session after the regularly scheduled council meeting to discuss the city manager's review.
All right, thank you. And we are at potential uses of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds. City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What staff did was prepare a couple summaries for council's review. This is not for, this isn't even close to being an approval, but it does give you an idea. I think there were some concerns, rightful concerns expressed by council about the danger of piecemealing our way to spend ARPA money, and that was not the intent, but certainly, it was a cause for concern. Staff split the, the allocation similar to what council had directed us in their resolution recently, 75% infrastructure, 25% non-infrastructure. So it, it was basically to give you a rough idea of where we were leaning, but also to give you an idea of trying to keep and maximize council's flexibility, and one thing I think I've seen through this process is that there may be a tendency to, well, let's spend it or at least allocate it, but I think there are still so many things going on, and, you know, even if you disagree with some of the things we have there, as you get later years, we're, we're more general with our descriptions, or at least our, I don't know if allocation, or I would prefer to call them reservations, reserve monies for future purposes. So we gave you a general description of each of the categories that are in there. Mr. Van Campel did the, the, the nice-looking colorful one with the numbers, but you'll see, in the blue, and this is on page 223 of the agenda, what was there, the blue ones were what was already approved by the council, which really precipitated your, your comments. That's $50,900. But then we identified projects that I had outlined in my cover letter to council with the budget that were not, that were in the CIP but weren't funded. Again, that's consistent with council's direction, because council's direction was, this stuff should be in the CIP before we start proposing it. So there's approximately $2,631,000. We will bring these back for your formal approval. I will tell you specifically, if, if I want to stay alive with my police and my fire chief, I will be bringing the radios to you at the very next meeting, so that's just So that's just for, so there's no surprises. The other ones, we will be bringing up very shortly. But in the short run, I want to show you things that we're specifically going to talk about. And then, as we get later in time, I'm being more general because I think it's a matter of, we'll know it when we get to it, but we're not there yet. And really, I'm talking about, you know, the green areas are things that we're thinking we're going to be doing in the next, within the next year. So about $3 million of the $20 million, we anticipate allocating within the next 12 months. The rest of it is really about future consideration, and that's everything that Mr. Van Campel pointed out in the tan areas. And there's less detail because it's more about reservations. We know that we're going to need some IT and security projects. The Police Department has done a thorough evaluation of all our facilities from a security lens, and they're making some recommendations that have been going through staff. We're not there yet, but we, those are things that are legitimate we need to do. And I would say that if it wasn't for ARPA, I would still be coming to you with these recommendations because these are our needs that we're going to have to address, IT and security needs. Similarly, we've identified some projects that are currently identified in the CIP that the council just approved. You just approved the '22 budget. '23, '24, we've got a series of projects. We're specifically itemizing them here because they are not funded based on our, the way we presented it to you. Similarly, we have two, the last two lines are the biggest lines. The last two lines are, you know, thirteen of the, or fourteen, excuse me, fourteen million of the entire $20 million. What are we going to do with '20, '23, and '20, '24 financing? You will be approving it about 52 weeks from right now. So to give you an idea, the council said for '23, you wanted to limit borrowing to 15 million. So Mr. Van Campel and I said, okay, with 15 million, we're projecting a borrowing level as high as $21 million. Roughly, we're about $6 billion short. So we're saying, well, keep that on your radar. We may need as much as $6 million. Council could say, well, maybe we won't, maybe we'll do a little more than 15 million. I'm not going to ask you to do that tonight. That would be inappropriate. But just keep on the radar that that's a possibility. And then furthermore, for 2024, we're anticipating a shortfall of eight and a quarter million. And if you saw something in the CIP you'd like to move up, you can add that number on top of that. So we're giving you an idea that to keep borrowing at 15 million is going to be a challenge. When we do the facilities analysis with you at the workshop on December 14th, you're going to get a good feel for what some of our facility needs are. That was one of the goals council gave me, and we're going to be, basically, this year is setting it up to say, here are all of our congregate needs, but it's, we've got a long ways to go. So I'm not anticipating we're going to be coming with anything more on the infrastructure side than what you see in green before you right now. It may change 100,000 or so, plus or minus, but we're in this ballpark.
Councilmember Ford.
Just two quick questions. So you're bringing this up to us today because we asked for it. Each of these items will be something we'll have the opportunity to vote on.
Everything you're going to vote on, nothing, and you've already voted on the stuff in the blue, so the next thing you're going to see is probably the next thing with the green, and you know I'm bringing the radios.
Oh, yeah. I just want to make that clear because I had a couple members of the public worried that this money's being approved tonight and that they're missing out on something. So I want to make that clear. And then to the radios, just real quick, so has the ship sailed? I was going to say the ship flow, but has the ship sailed on the county helping us with those?
Pretty much, it's sailed. Neither chief, I know Chief Smith is available. He's online, but no, the county is not giving any indication. I thought maybe with some of the smaller townships. I spoke with the Town of El Goma, and they're staring down about a half-million-dollar expenditure. So they're, that, you know, that small department with all of their paid-on-call folks, they got a half-million dollars in radios. Chief Stanley has $689,000. But they issue a radio to each and every volunteer, whether that person goes to one fire call or every fire call. So they've got some expenditures. I was hoping that that was going to help leverage it for us.
Just following up on it. Appreciate it. Yeah, thank you for trying.
Yeah. So that's the infrastructure side of things. On the non-infrastructure side, that's the following, page 224. It's much less, it's only a little, it's a little over $5,128,000. The only one I specifically identified at this time is the Day-by-Day Warming Shelter. I will tell you that County Executive Daimel and I have been working together about the state ARPA funds that they've been requesting, the neighborhood.
Neighborhood investment.
Thank you, thank you, the neighborhood investment. I keep forgetting. But anyway, the deadline is Thursday. Our staff's been working with county folks. We're going to be submitting something on Thursday. And I know the county's going to be submitting something for Day-by-Day. So this is really about not to exceed for us, or an up-to amount, depending on what happens with the county. The county's going to be making some applications relative to Day-by-Day and tiny homes. We will not submit to the state for those two because the county's doing that. We didn't want to have overlap. Similarly, we're going to be pursuing COTS and other homeless initiatives, and Ms. Kniforth and her staff have been scrambling the last three weeks to meet this deadline. I really appreciate that. So after the Day-by-Day, up to $1 million, other homeless initiatives, whether it's tiny homes or COTS or something else, just reserving it, not saying, let's, we're going to do it. I don't even want to, I dare even mention them by name because that can change as well. Then everything else is about just kind of steering it into a certain column, but not approving it. $1,875,000 for housing and nonprofit assistance with a potential county-state match. Ms. Kniforth and her staff have been identifying some things that can be done. A good example is assistance to people that are seeking housing funds. One of the things we've learned through this process is currently there are adequate funds available for people to get rental assistance. The application side of things is a little tough. If anything comes out first, it'll probably be that, I anticipate coming to you saying, I think we need to help the advocates of the world help process these applications. I don't think we're going to need to use any of our money for direct rental assistance because that money's there, just the administrative overhead's not there. So that's what I predict. Again, it's very general today. I just give you that. Plus Kelly's looking for what else we can leverage from the state. And I think that's the most important thing right now, what we can leverage from the state. And then also similarly, and this goes back to a conversation the mayor and I had with Secretary of Administration Brennan, what was it, about six months ago, Mayor, at least, would we be willing to put something up if, for, to help with businesses? And our answer was, well, sure, of course we would. Again, it's a reservation to see what programs are out there. I don't know what else is going to be out there, but I want to be able to match it if necessary. And that leaves $4,125,000 allocated, reserved, with another $1 million reserving to 1124 to give you more time to see what happens. So you're going to see those things, and that's what we're anticipating. So that's kind of my not-so-brief presentation. Happy to answer any questions. This is not set in stone. This, all this is, is colorized. You can recolor these any way you want. And you don't have to do it tonight, but feedback would be absolutely welcome.
So all of the green are in our CIP? Or just that top section?
The second section was colored by me, not Russ, so don't. The green on the first page are things that we're anticipating in 2022. The green on my page just is because it looks nice. So don't worry about the green on my page.
I seem to recall there were a number of infrastructure things that we talked about that had common themes in the, I'm sorry, Russ, did you, you look like you're.
I'm waiting for you to.
He's poised. He's ready.
He's ready to jump.
I have some additional comments that I'd like to share if you're, whenever you're ready.
Yes, go ahead.
So I just wanted to walk you through real quickly and just expand a little bit on the potential infrastructure projects. And I wanted to expand a little bit on the projects in the '22 CIP were things that were not financed. It was identified in our CIP plan, but we didn't have a financing source identified when we did the plan itself. So that's that section that totals $2.6 million, which includes the radios. So that's all in the CIP plan. When we did our capital improvement plan, we had identified the potential of up to $1.5 million in levy-supported projects. And when we were given the task of keeping the levy to four to five percent, we said we could no longer afford a levy of 1.5. The budget that you adopted has a levy of 1.1, which is about a $400,000 gap. And these are projects that were identified in the capital improvement plan that we need to find financing for because it's no longer included in the levy. So my request for you, either whenever it's convenient, hopefully at the next meeting, that those $447,000, $450 worth of projects that were levy shortfall, that you would consider making that appropriation through ARPA funds. And I also just wanted to speak just a little bit on the IT and security projects. I know we talked about some of these at budget time as well. They are not included in the budget, but they are projects that we feel are worthwhile to proceed soon. And I know that we've talked about some of the delay in supply chain issues in delivery of goods and purchases. So in talking with our IT director, some of those equipments we'd like to get ordered as well, as soon as we can. So I would ask for your consideration on those additional $44,000, hopefully at the next meeting, if not, you know, or whenever you feel comfortable doing. But I just wanted to highlight those groupings to make sure you understood where, how they were presented to you this evening.
Just a, I guess, clarifying question then. So where we have items under projects for future consideration now below, fire hose, museum masonry, museum general purpose room, fire station renovations, that's also up under the 2022 levy shortfall?
No. When I identified projects that could be funded from ARPA through that shortfall, they were projects that had multiple years' requests. They were, like, they would buy, you know, so much hose or generators in '22, '23, and '24.
Okay.
My assumption when I did this is if we're going to consider that to be funded by ARPA in 2022, just to understand that there's a future tag-along of the similar items in future years. Not asking for approval of those tonight, but those were identified when I looked at the levy shortfall project, they were subsequent years, potential allocations that you could consider. So they kind of tagged along, but we don't need authorization or approval for those soon. We can wait until next year to do that.
And I think that was part of the direction, was to not put anything in that was going to create extended support beyond?
Yeah.
So that kind of.
That's why we separated them two. Because it's like, even though they're, if you look programmatically at the CIP, it's like '22, '23, '24, et cetera. But the only, the only ones we're going to be spending anytime soon is what's in the green. And mostly what happens for '23 and '24, when we get there. But we're just giving you a radar of where we think it's going to go.
For some reason, I thought also that there was reference to the City Hall ADA modifications needed in a former discussion or iteration, and I'm, maybe I'm not seeing it here.
No, Madam Mayor, I believe that is already incorporated in the CIP that you adopted.
Okay.
And it was financed.
Okay.
So it's not an unfunded project at this time.
It's all kind of swirling around.
Trying to keep it straight for you.
But you will see, when we make the presentation on the 14th, you're going to see some stuff over and above what Russ is referring to. There's, you know, our, there is some ADA stuff, but there's even more now that we've gotten this presentation, so. So you'll be seeing that, and that's going to be future years. That's not going to be, you know, it's going to be a pretty sizable amount of money.
Do other council members want to speak to this? All right.
The only other one.
Deputy Mayor.
Sorry to cut you off over there, City Manager.
That's okay.
No, I think this is, this is the next step. This is what we requested, whether we directly did or multiple times indirectly. We requested this next step, that you give us what you and the finance team think are the, you know, not necessarily the rough draft because you guys have already gone through several iterations of the rough draft, but what you would present to us as strong viable options to use this one-time funding for. So I want to appreciate, say thank you for that. I appreciate you guys putting this, you know, pen to paper and giving us that. For those at home that may see this on the screen or just actually look it up, it's not, I'll be honest, it's not fun to look at. It's not a new expansion on, you know, on a library, or it's not a big shiny object. This is absolutely funding, suggested funding for necessary things to support our city staff, to support the city government, and the things that we do on behalf of the people that, to provide those services that are essential, police and fire, streets, making sure the, you know, the water runs and the toilets are able to flush. So that's the type of stuff that I'm thankful to see on here, actually, that it's not just a one-time blast, and we get to see the shiny object and then, and then what. So I'm appreciative of that. I think it gives us a good starting point to give you some feedback. And I also like the option of repaying the debt to the community foundation on behalf of the, for the convention center. That's a liability that we've had for a while, and that with the massive drop-off in room tax dollars and then the unknown for room tax dollars going forward, I don't know how else we will support them in getting rid of, you know, getting rid of that cloud that's hanging over the CVB and the convention center there. So very supportive of doing something along those lines as well.
And I guess just to tag on to that, too, it's my understanding that that $900,000 repayment will free up the Oshkosh Foundation to do some more direct basic needs-type grants that they otherwise might not be able to do. Is that?
This came right out of their corpus when they gave us this loan way back when. So this will restore that, that they could start using it for that basic stuff. Thank you for bringing that up. That was, I'm glad, I didn't mention that, so I appreciate both of you mentioning it.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. You covered 90% of what I was going to say, so thank you. But it's huge for us to not be deadbeats to the people that support us. So getting this paid off quickly, as the mayor and Matt have indicated, they're going to put this money back to work in the community. So I don't even view it as repaying this money. They're going to dump this money right back into the community. We've cheated them out of revenues and interest and everything else. It's time to settle up with these people. Not to mention, I think Matt mentioned it, you know, it takes $25,000 a year out of the CVB, you know, indebtedness also. I mean, so this is just a triple win, so let's just get, let's cut them the check ASAP and move on and enjoy the benefits of the, of the foundation. Thank you.
I guess I would just ask, too, moving forward, if we could identify any of the future documents that relate to the public input applications, so that we know what came from those applications? I was kind of expecting a summary of what those were, those individual and those organizational applications because it's not clear to me in looking at this which ones touch those community requests. That's all.
Most of the dollars, you'll recall, were infrastructure-related, so they were departments. So those ones I'll spare you on because you pretty much approved those in the CIP. The other stuff, I think, is totally legitimate, and that's where those reservations. Eventually, we're going to be coming to you with recommendations. I'm having active discussions with different nonprofits to get more clarification on this. I think there was some nervousness based on emails and calls I got. I think the council members got calls, oh, you're allocating the money tonight. No, we're not. It's just, and their applications will be in that either $750,000 or the $1,875,000, or even the $1 million that we're reserving for a while. But we'll be coming back, and I think that's a great idea to say, it came from public input. It came from that. I really appreciate that feedback.
Okay. All right. Next, we have council member announcements and statements. I'd like to go first in that we did have a Parks Advisory Board last night. It was rather brief, and we will not have a Parks Advisory Board meeting in December unless more pressing items come to them. But there was some reference to going to a one- But there was some reference to going to a one-year contract with the school district over the Pollock Park, Pollock Water Park arrangement. And I'd also just like to make an announcement that we do have a handful of board and commission seats available, both alternate spots and full seats. And if anyone out there has an interest in Stormwater Utility, they have gone for quite a while without a full board. So that's one. And then I believe Long Range Finance, yes, and, and several others. So please, if you do decide to put your application online, that is on the board and commission page, and you can feel free to apply for multiple boards and commissions if you have multiple interests, in case one that you're interested in does not have an opening. And I will pass it on to other council members for board and commission reports. Councilmember Wojkowski.
I'll just mention that DEI, they have pushed their meeting back this month, a week. I believe it's the fifth Monday of this month, and that's just to allow us to have a conversation with our new Alonso, who's the, who's going to be helping us develop our strategic plan for DEI. So really excited to kind of get that rolling. Will be our first official meeting doing that, so.
What is the, the name of the new facilitator?
Alonso, I don't know.
Alonso Kelly.
Kelly, thank you.
Alonso Kelly, okay.
Thank you.
Other board and commission reports? All right. City manager announcements and statements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's a little anticlimactic after you adopted the big budget, but our third quarter reports are in there. Basically, they're consistent with our projections that are in the budget, so there's really not a lot to report, except it's, it's okay. Outstanding issues, there's been a handful of updates in there because of the budget getting adopted, as well as some other things. The facility study, you know, we're going to be bringing that to council on December 14th. The landlord-tenant stuff I mentioned earlier, the neighborhood investment grant program, so we'll be working, submitting that to the state. So we're expecting to hear after the first of the year sometime on that stuff. And the DEI KPIs, Mr. Spatitz working on those. We've, we've got a couple little ideas that might, might change things up a little bit but still meet the council's goal. And I think Fitz and Michelle will be talking to the DEI committee soon about that.
Just a question on the transportation utility B. When do you expect council will be looking at this? I know there was some time you wanted to get that out in the community. What are your thoughts?
Yeah, I think the next step is to authorize R.A. Smith to begin doing the, the meat of the work dealing with primarily business accounts to put those estimates together. There was mixed reviews at the chamber presentation yesterday, but one of the things that I think came out of that discussion, and Russ was there as well, so he can help maybe shed some light on it, but the transition from a special assessment to fees and where's the cutoff, that's going to be a huge issue, and I do not have an answer for that. My answer to you is really more about the, the technical backroom stuff that can get done. It's just, it's just a lot of your sleeve work type of thing. But that policy issue is probably going to be the biggest thing that'll, that'll challenge council. So that I think we're going to need to bring, you know, if we're going to do this, how do we address that? Because I think you recall, those of you who were on council two years ago, when it came up, that was, well, what about me? I, you know, I want to be on the fee side, not the assessment side. And you've heard that, and I think that'll be a challenge.
So how long do we think it'll take R.A. Smith to do this next step before we?
What about, it'll take about three months for them to finalize that, and then it'll be, it, it may take a few more months to get that. And then it's going to be about the cutoff. When do you cutoff? When do you implement it? That'll be the biggest challenge. So three months for R.A. Smith to give you some final numbers and then get the process going, which could take another three months. Yeah. The other thing is, I think Mr. Robbie will be working with R.A. Smith to come back and present a formal request or, not a proposal, but Phase Two of their work, which is what the city manager was talking about, is, you know, getting that engagement for the Phase Two approach so that he can start looking at utility information on behalf of the city. And I would, I would anticipate that coming up in the next couple of meetings.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
COVID update?
We're just, you know, we're, our numbers are still up. Hopeful with juvenile vaccines getting out the door. It's real exciting. We're still, county's still holding vaccination walk-in Wednesday at the Sunny View Expo Center, and Tuesday mornings, I believe nine to noon at the public library. So wcvaccine.org is the place to get that information if you want a booster shot. And then the school district is also assisting getting information out about the kids getting the vaccines.
And I'll just share too, this is a little-known, maybe, resource for testing. If you can't get out, but you do have access to email or the Internet of Things, you can request a home test from Department of Health Services. The state will send it to you next day air, I got one. And you just do your little test via Zoom with some instructions, and it's a prepaid envelope that goes directly back next day air also. And then within, within a couple of days, you've got your results. So similar to the, it is a PCR, so I just thought I would share that. You can request that home test if you can't work it into your schedule otherwise to get over to one of the physical locations. So that's all I have.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.